Right now, filled with students from local colleges and universities. Let's give some reactions at the bottom of your screen for the Gen Action Group. So each one of you that are here today are the best kind of civically engaged locals. You know, you care about Miami, you understand the power of local elections. You choose to be informed and engaged, and this year Miami will feel your presence. I am Faith Grant, and I'm the Collective Impact Officer here at the Miami Foundation. And at our foundation, we envision a greater Miami where everyone can thrive. And so having great elected leaders is a huge part of that. So throughout this month, we are hosting these forums. We want you to get to know the candidates that are striving to lead the place that we call home. And I know in a few minutes, one of my colleagues is going to drop a chat where you can find the lineup of all of our candidate forums that we have for you this month. So tonight, we're super excited to focus on the Commissioner race for District Seven. Personally, this is near and dear to my heart because District Seven, I lived there for about five years. And so I'm super excited for us to have this conversation. You know, commissioners play a huge role in the way that we live and we thrive in our community. From them creating and amending and passing local laws to managing and voting on budgets. They influence the way that our lands are utilized. And frankly, their decisions impact various aspects of our lives. We're talking about transportation and housing, public safety, economic development, and even our environmental protection. And but to me, and I think to all of us, most importantly, commissioners represent and serve as a direct link between residents and the county. So before passing the floor to our moderators, you know, these forums take a lot of coordination. And this event could not be possible without partnership, which is my favorite part of the work that I do at the Miami Foundation. So huge shout out to AARP Florida, to the IAT Community Trust, Catalyst Miami, the Clio Institute, Disability Independence Group, Engage Miami, Radical Partners, Transit Alliance, the League of Women Voters, and The United Way. I see those reactions. Yes, let's give it up for them. But lastly, 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 before we start, I want to remind our viewers that tonight's conversation is not a debate. It is a forum. We are here to hear our candidates' ideas, uplift their leadership, and understand their values. These forums are not about parties. It's about Miami. So it is my esteemed pleasure to introduce this evening's moderator, Martin Vazlo from Axios Miami.
Thank you so much, Faith. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Vote Miami Candidate Forum, a town hall event where you're going to hear directly from the candidates running for District Seven on the Miami-Dade County Commission. My name's Martin Vasolo, and I'm a reporter with Axios Miami. District Seven stretches from Key Biscayne to Kendall, including the cities of Coral Gables, Coconut Grove, and Pinecrest. Our goal tonight is to help voters understand who these candidates are and where they stand on issues that affect our community. We also encourage those in the audience to please submit your questions for our candidates using the Q and A function at the bottom of your screens. We're going to be answering a select few of those later in the program. Before we begin, I'd like to provide some ground rules to ensure that our discussion runs smoothly and fairly. First, the Miami Foundation wants to create a space of belonging and inclusion of all viewpoints, whether we agree or not. We urge our candidates to be respectful to each other and refrain from personal attacks or insults. Each candidate will have equal opportunities to speak, of course, and each of them will have one minute to answer questions with 30 seconds for a rebuttal. We've provided a timer to help keep you concise and ensure we hear from each candidate in a timely manner. Candidates, please wait for your turn to speak and don't interrupt each other. Lastly, very important, we may mute a candidate's microphone if they exceed their time limit or violate conduct rules, so please be aware of that. And this is just in order for us to get to as many questions as possible. Without further ado, let's meet our candidates. Running for reelection is District Seven Commissioner Raquel Regalado. Her challenges are Cindy Lerner, the former mayor of Pinecrest, and Richard Praschnik, who works as a police officer for the Miami-Dade Schools Police Department. Mr. Praschnik unfortunately could not join us this evening. Thank you both for being here, and let's begin with introductory remarks. We're going to give each of you 90 seconds to introduce yourselves and share why you're running for this position and what your top priorities are. So if we may, please begin with Commissioner Regalado. You have 90 seconds whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. You forgot the city of South Miami, which is a city of pleasant living. That's also in District Seven, so we're also very proud to represent them. I have been the county commissioner for this area for almost four years. And prior to that, I was actually the school board member who represented this area for two terms at Miami-Dade County Public Schools. As many of you know, I ran for a position on the school board when my children were diagnosed with autism. And when I ran for the District Seven seat, I talked about the need to focus on employment and training and infrastructure. And that's exactly what I've done. This last weekend at the National Association of Counties, Miami-Dade County received an award for the work that we've done with autism. Specifically in our libraries, we trained all of our library personnel. We have sensory kits, we have stories for every single library. We've trained our police officers, over 2,800 first responders to date, and we continue training them. And we started our occupant with autism decal and a registry that I have now met with seven different counties in the state of Florida that they want to emulate, which prevents our children from being baker acted and arrested. My children are now adults, 19 and 21, and this work has been so important. And I want to thank the county commission, the prior commission and this current commission for all the support that they've given me in our autism initiatives, which really have been so important, from parks to transit, to libraries, to police and fire and emergency. I've also been the chair of infrastructure for the sewer, and our septic tanks are the number one pollutant. Thank you so much.
Commissioner. Thank you. Former Mayor Lerner, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity at this forum. First, I want to apologize for my voice being somewhat hoarse. I've been overusing it day and night for months, and it's feisty at times. So I want to explain why I'm running, what first inspired me to be an advocate and an activist and run for office. As an attorney, my first job was at the Guardian-Adelaide program in Dade County Juvenile Court, representing the best interests of abused and neglected children. I did that for 16 years, working with incredible volunteers who had to assure that children receive services and nurturing environments. I realized that they weren't getting what they needed, nor were their families. And I started going to the legislature to advocate for changes in policy and allocating budgets where they needed to go. Immediately, it occurred to me that too many legislators knew nothing or cared much about this whole population of families. And I decided the best advocate I could be was helping make that policy and allocate.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind you, we do have a timer, and we'll be muting candidates just to make sure we can get through the show. But thank you both so much. I'd love to now jump into our questions for this evening, some of which we gathered from the Miami Foundation's nonprofit partners. And I would love to start with traffic and transportation because that is what we, we live and breathe every single day. The traffic's getting worse, and people want to know what can we do about it? So if we can start with Commissioner Regalado, how do you plan to improve public transit in your district? And are you confident in Miami-Dade's SMART program for Kendall and South Dade?
Well, first and foremost, I chaired Tri-Rail. And after almost six years of delays, we were able to finally get the train in the station. We got a new executive director. It's been transformative to take Tri-Rail to Miami Central, especially now with the changes in the bright line prices. We're expanding the hours. We have an express train that is getting folks out of downtown. And we have two federal grants that we've been able to get in order to redo our infrastructure. We're also working on the Coastal Link. I've been working with Commissioner Higgins. That's going to hopefully be under SFRTA, and that will add transit stops to Midtown, to North Miami, to the Design District, all the way up to Aventura. And we've been working with our Broward partners as that continues up the coast. We also have agreed to have a one ticket for the tri-county area. And we've been doing a lot of work, working with Broward and West Palm Beach to really align our transit. Yesterday, at the Board of County Commissioners, we passed an ordinance that will be transformative because it will allow us to go from smart starts to really big projects to finish the SMART plan. The Coastal Link is part of the SMART plan, but we want to do the Flagler Corridor, which we added at the TPO, which starts at Marlin Stadium and goes all the way to FIU. And we're working on the existing rail lines in order to do the east-west, specifically for West Kendall.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Sorry, we ran out of time. Former Mayor Lerner, if you can take that, how do you plan to improve public transit in your district? And are you confident in Miami-Dade's SMART program?
So no, I am not confident in the SMART program. When I was mayor of Pinecrest for eight years, myself, all of the South Dade mayors, our commissioner at the time, who is now our mayor, and legislators all fought for and tried to demand an expansion of Metro Rail from Daytran to Homestead. Unfortunately, we were not successful. And what we were given instead is what they call Bus Rapid Transit. However, it is not Bus Rapid Transit. They're building stations that could eventually be transferred into a Metro Rail servicing. But we're getting electric buses, regular buses, no rapid transit. And for as far as connectivity, there is totally insufficient connectivity between the rail system and the bus.
Thank you so much. We'll just have to move on to the next question, but thanks so much to you both. Question number two, and we'll start with you, former Mayor Lerner, with this one. Can you outline some strategies to make housing more affordable and accessible, particularly for low-income families?
The affordability for low income, for single-career individuals is impossible throughout the county and especially in District Seven because there are many parts of District Seven that, such as Pinecrest, Coral Gables, that are so high-end that it's impossible for young families to get started there. The building that is going on, the development, does not address the needs of low income. It is high rises at market rate, and they've all been approved along the corridor, which cuts through the district, and none of it is creative and innovative. We need to look outside of the local area for more innovative ways to address housing.
Thank you so much. That is time. Commissioner Regalado, this is obviously a problem. Can you address some of those solutions to making housing more affordable and accessible?
Of course. So one of the things that we've done is to work on the nodes. So in South Miami, we have the box development, which has a Phase One and Phase Two. This has been student housing at a price point that students can afford, and it has allowed us to prevent the houses in South Miami from being cut up. We're very excited about the expansion of that. SOMI is a project that we just have finished, and we opened the doors, bringing people back to that area. The building that was there was in very bad shape, but we have 65% AMI, 45% AMI, and 85% AMI. So we're talking about people that are making $35,000, $40,000, and $60,000 that are living at SOMI, and we're working on SOMI Phase Two. We do have workforce housing in the developments that we've done at Link at 37th Avenue and also at 27th Avenue, and there is some affordable there. At Platform, we actually have 45% AMI, 65% AMI, and 85% AMI. So we've covered that. I'm working on three different projects, including two in the West Grove that are going to have the 850 to 1,500 rent that we have lost throughout the county. And I've brought several items, including the rezonification around the airports that allow us to house airport workers that make less than $65,000. We're also working on co-living for
Thank you so much. I just want to remind you both, the timer is at the top of the screen. Hopefully, you all can see it. If there's a way to pin, it's on the Miami Foundation profile there. But thank you so much. Obviously, there's, there's a lot to talk about here. So moving on now, and we'll go back to you, Commissioner Regalado. What's the biggest environmental or resiliency challenge facing District Seven and the county at large? And how do you plan to tackle that, or how have you tackled that so far?
Infrastructure, infrastructure. Miami-Dade County simply has not had the infrastructure that it needed specifically for water quality. I have focused on water projects and really expanding water and sewer. In District Seven, we've redone a lot of our water and sewer lines. And for example, the underline, we undergrounded the electrical. We did water and sewer, and we also did fiber, which was really important. You know, throughout the district, we've been redoing the infrastructure and really educating people on how infrastructure is community benefit when we have redevelopment. I've brought several items that have made this easier for water and sewer to do, including items that have to do with capacity and with pump stations. Now there's no more private pump stations. They all get turned over to the county, and they can become a subregional pump station, which is what's going to allow us to connect people from septic to sewer. It's really important for folks to understand that on the stormwater side, we're also working. And in terms of wastewater, we're working on forever chemicals and PFABs. And we're actually using our cleaned wastewater at the nuclear plant at Turkey Point instead of having them drill down and take water from our aquifer. We have five new projects that we're working on for reusing waste.
Thank you, Commissioner. Former Mayor Lerner, the question to you now about the biggest environmental challenges facing the district and the county, and how you plan to address that.
Thank you for that question. When I was mayor of Pinecrest, I was participating in the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Plan, which shared the science and came up with infrastructure, planning needs, and resiliency. I created our own climate action plan for Pinecrest to address flooding and creating stronger stormwater drainage programs, which we started in Pinecrest. I did that as president of the Miami-Dade League of Cities, tried to bring all the cities together with the county, with the mayor Jimenez, because they coordinate at the county level in Broward, but they still don't do it in Miami-Dade. So that is one of my priorities, to make sure the cities collaborate and the county takes more of a lead.
Thanks so much, and I just wanted to remind you that there is a timer at the top of the screen. I hope it's not too difficult to see, but maybe we'll get the hang of this as we go through this event. Question four, we'll go back to you, Mayor, former Mayor Lerner. I wanted to ask about the Calusa Country Club. There's an ongoing effort to develop that into housing. Opponents have argued it should be preserved as an environmental sanctuary. Where do you stand on that issue and why?
So the Calusa Golf Course was bought up by developers. They had come to the county commission seeking a development of, I believe it was 550 homes with no green space, no park area. It was an increased density unfair to the community. The first vote of the commissioner was to provide the zoning for the redevelopment without negotiating as the community had paid. What would I do? I would have negotiated and not allowed that level of development. Right now, I think the county needs to try to purchase the entire golf course. There is now a rookery that is entitled to environmental protection, and it would be a perfect area for parks.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Regalado, the question to you about the Calusa Country Club.
Thank you. So the Calusa Country Club had a covenant that kept it as a golf course. And the owners around the ring actually signed off that covenant as the prior county commission had asked them to. They got a super majority to do that, and that's how the item came before us for the zoning that was allowed by the Comprehensive Master Plan. We did require green space, and we did preserve the rookery. The rookery exists because Durham and the county commission, I specifically put in the item that they had to preserve the rookery for its eternity. So whoever owns that area will have to preserve the rookery. Durham has spent a lot of time going out there, making sure that everything is fine. The developer has also been working with the neighbors to preserve the rookery. So the preservation of the rookery is a done deal as far as Miami-Dade County is concerned. In terms of it being a park, that's simply not feasible. Miami-Dade County has invested a lot of money in the underline. We have a lot of parks that we already own, and our park impact fees at this point cannot be spent in the millions to buy parkland in areas like District Seven that already have a lot of parks. One of the things that we've done is to focus
Thank you so much. Sorry to cut you off there. I'd love to turn to another District Seven issue. There are a lot of them. The Coconut Grove Playhouse, a historic gem that's been closed sadly for nearly 20 years, tied up in the courts. There's a plan from the county to save the front of the building, demolish the auditorium, and reopen it. Some critics want to preserve the full playhouse, and that's been at the crux of this argument. Former Mayor Lerner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Regalado, we'll go to you first on the Coconut Grove Playhouse. Where do you stand and why?
Coconut Grove Playhouse, the debate is really about the number of seats. You know, I've taken folks to the playhouse. The front of the playhouse, which is the original playhouse, is more than a facade. It was the actual playhouse. The additions that were done later were deemed nonhistoric. When I was elected, the county was in litigation with the city of Miami, and the county named me to settle that litigation. I settled that litigation with the city, and we decided to move forward with the playhouse. A group of residents have continued in court, but we've actually settled all of our issues. I changed the plan as much as I could without returning to the state. And one of the concerns in the Grove is that the main highway that's already a parking lot cannot sustain more than 350 seats at that playhouse. I added an educational component. I added a pocket park. I added access to the West Grove, and I actually had the support of all the people that live in that area. And we want to reopen the playhouse. The only reason we haven't moved forward with a fully funded project to restore the historical playhouse in time for its 100th anniversary and to add the addition that looks like the park that we're demolishing by opening it up to the West Grove is because of the existing litigation, but that's already at the Supreme Court level. So we hope that
Thank you so much. So I want to make sure that, you know, all of us are able to experience this forum. And I also want to hear everything that you are saying. So before we continue, I want to just make sure that our candidates are able to see and then can confirm that they see the timer, because we don't want to keep cutting you all off. Can you all make sure, just confirm with me, you can see the timer at the top of your screen? It's counting down right now.
I cannot see it. I cannot see it.
I cannot either.
That's super helpful for us to know. Yeah, continue to watch you get cut off like this. All right, so what I want you to do is look at the very top. If you have your zoom open, you'll see at the very top of the screen a very small timer, but you can also see it at the Miami Foundation. Is there a way that we can pin that timer? If not, what we'll do, candidates, is that we'll just
I just, I can see it now.
Perfect.
Now I can see it, right.
Wonderful. Okay.
It went away.
Okay. Can you see it now?
No, the white, the white screen that you have is what's blocking it. It was like on the left-hand side.
Let me turn my screen. Can you see it now?
Yes, I can. It's in the left-hand corner.
Left-hand corner timer.
And if I can just jump in, if you hover over that icon, you should be able to pin it. So that's, it becomes a little larger.
I can see it now.
Perfect. Now I'll pass it back to you, Martin, just to confirm and just to make sure everyone is able to see the timer. Because you're saying too many things. I don't want to lose this. So make sure, I want to make sure you all can see the timer. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I think, former Mayor Lerner, it was your turn. The question was about the Coconut Grove Playhouse and what its future should be in the debate over that.
Okay. All right. The very first play I ever saw as a child growing up here was at the Coconut Grove Playhouse, as many of us experienced. The original lease, the state owns the property, signed a lease in 2013 with the county. The goal in the lease was to restore a regional theater. Regional theaters do require a certain number of seats. Anywhere from 600 to 700 is the ideal number of seats. The county has violated every part of the lease. They have not maintained it. They have not kept it from what appears to be demolition by neglect. They actually sought a demolition permit that would have eliminated 80%. So there was no intent in that plan to restore a regional theater. Instead, they want to build a cocoa walk to. I am committed to restoring a regional theater and making sure that the community has a part of the planning for the entire venue.
Thank you so much, former Mayor Lerner. We have to move on to the next question. I'd like to turn now to a new state law that takes effect October 1st that will ban homeless individuals from sleeping on sidewalks and in other public places. Governments across South Florida must now grapple with how to comply with this law. If elected or re-elected, what would be your plan to address homelessness in the county? And we'll start with you, Commissioner Regalado.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I have the pleasure of serving on the Chapman Partnership for six years, and I am now serving on Miami Rescue Mission. My father serves on Lotus House and served on the Homeless Trust for seven years. So we've been doing this work for a very long time. I am actually the county commissioner that's working on the Lifeman Project. And one of the things that we're doing is including this in that program because we're working on a diversion program. You know, the law is going to say that we have to arrest these individuals, and we've actually filed several locations where we're going to take them instead of taking them to our jails. So we're bringing that diversion program in September. We were working with the state and with our judges and with the support of our police officers. And the work that I do in this area is one of the reasons why I'm the candidate supported by police and fire and our nurses.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. We went under time there. That's amazing. Former Mayor Lerner, the question to you about this new state law that's forcing local governments to grapple with how to comply. It's a ban on people experiencing homelessness, sleeping in public places.
Right. So I want to give a shout out to an incredible program that started in downtown Miami. Hermanos de la Caie, where volunteers started going out and meeting with people that um and uh meeting with people that were on the streets and convincing them to come in from outside of the street, providing them with the capacity to do so. They have now purchased homes throughout the community. They've gotten funding from the Homeless Trust. That is the kind of model where you're building relationships and not criminalizing people um who, for any number of reasons, are finding themselves on the street but would much rather have self-respect and ability to get a job and and have a positive future.
Thank you both so much. Moving on to the next question, um, and we're going to jump back to you, former Mayor Lerner. What policies do you hope to implement to promote social justice and racial equity in Black communities?
Um, so I have been working very closely with the communities in South Miami and Coconut Grove, the West Grove, now um renamed um Little Bahamas. And there are historic segregation policies that continue to be very problematic, especially in the city of Miami and in the West Grove. The contamination by Old Smokey has never been remediated and that is an environmental justice, a social justice issue. Housing um is being uh deprived their their legacy because developers have swooped in and purchased and leveled all of Grand Avenue. And that community is uh empowered through various local organizations to want it to more. They just haven't had a commissioner to help them do it.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Regalado. The question to you, what policies would you implement or have you implemented to promote social justice and racial equity in Black communities?
Thank you. In the Platform Building and in SOMI, which are the two affordable housing that we've done in District Seven since I've been elected, we actually hired branches in South Miami um and the Thelma Gibson Foundation in the West Grove to work directly with our residents, not only that live in that area but that have been displaced by the county to other areas so that they could return to Coconut Grove. HUD has very strict rules regarding lotteries. And what we were able to do is to help these folks by expunging their records, helping them with their financials, and sitting through the application process with them so that they could secure these units. And we're very happy with the work that we've done. I've also been named the vice chair of the National Committee of Counties Housing um uh group, and we're working with HUD to change these lotteries so that for displaced communities like the African Americans in Miami Dade County that were sent out south and never allowed to return so that we could create special lottery systems for them within our housing so they can return to the zip codes where they grew up and where their parents grew up. So we're very excited about that work and actually got the support of our delegates in Tampa when they made me the vice chair and appointed me as the person to work on this in Washington.
Thank you so much. Um, and we'll go right back to you, Commissioner Regalado. Um, individuals with disabilities and particularly Black disabled people face police violence, incarceration, and other impacts of the criminal justice system at very high rates. How do you plan to address police violence and ensure that disabled people and disabled people of color are safe from that?
Well, we've been focusing on training. As I mentioned, when we started, we have the largest training of our police officers. And we're just not talking about twenty-five minutes of training, which is what most people, you know, do. We actually worked with UMSU Card. It's the six to eight hour training uh that actually involves adults with disabilities coming and meeting with our police officers. We also created a committee within Miami Dade PD of parents of disabled children uh that came in and worked as peers uh for the other officers to speak to them. We're very proud of the work that we're doing and that it's being emulated in other counties and being recognized nationally. We have a serious issues with Baker Act and with people not understanding de-escalation for people that have disabilities, specifically intellectual disabilities. Physical disabilities are visible, but intellectual disabilities, something that an autistic person does in terms of flailing, for example, will look like violence. And you will think that you need to Baker Act them or you need to arrest them. So we've really gone very far in educating our police officers, in educating our first responders. And you can see by the rate, we have less Baker acting, less arrests. We also work with the state attorney, uh, and one of the things that I have been doing is a different intake system for adults with disabilities.
Thank you so much. Sorry, we have to move on. And to you, former Mayor Lerner, the same question. Um, how will you address police violence and ensure that disabled people and disabled people of color are safe and know how to interact with the police?
One of the most successful models is community policing so that the um the entire infrastructure um it becomes a part of the community. And whether it's social, mental health, economic needs, um, the police are not uh positioning themselves to arrest or punish but to assist and support the community. And those areas that have community policing, they bring in a as a resource. Um, the other thing that has been started here that's very successful is civil citations instead of arrest and punishment. So especially um dealing with disabled um and very challenged communities, um minority communities, um civil citations, it's much better and community policing it.
Thank you so much. It's such an important topic. And I just want to remind our viewers um that our Q and A is open uh for user submitted questions. So we would love to to hear from you. Um, and now moving on to the next question, and I'll give it back to you, uh, former Mayor Lerner. Door knocking, speaking with residents, what have you learned most campaigning this cycle? It's neither of your first time uh in this rodeo, but what have you learned this time around? And how are people's sentiments and concerns changing where where you live?
Um, so I have been going door to door from one end of the district to the other, which is one of the reasons my voice is so hoarse knocking on doors. Um, two things that I've learned. Um, for the most part, people do not know who their county commissioner is, nor do they know what the county does, especially in Kendall, in West Kendall, in um various unincorporated areas. They have no access to local government. They have to either go downtown or go to an office in the Grove and they have no regular access. So that's the biggest um concern I'm hearing. I'm hearing the issues with lack of uh transit, with uh traffic congestion, with overdevelopment, and with nonresponsiveness from their local commissioner. Um, I have made that promise that I engage my community when I was mayor and would continue to do that as commissioner.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Regalado. You hear from residents at your meetings and you're also campaigning. Uh, so the same question to you, what are you hearing? And how have uh sentiments and needs changed since your last campaign?
Uh, well, our last campaign was in twenty twenty, so it was very difficult to speak to people. So this was, this has been a very different campaign where we can door knock or we can have public meetings. So it's really refreshing to be able to have those interactions. Twenty twenty was a very, very difficult campaign cycle. Uh, one of the main topics is flooding and septic sewer. A lot of our uh constituents have septic tanks and they have lots of questions about the different changes that we've made to septic tanks, everything from the septic rider to the new fiberglass tank. I get a lot of questions about that. And I also get a lot of questions about stormwater. Yesterday, we actually passed our impermeability ordinance, which we've been working on at the county for over two years. Carlos Hernandez, who recently passed away, started that work a very, very long time ago. And this establishes a countywide system for stormwater. I get a lot of questions about insurance. And one of the great things that we've been able to do uh at the county is because of the purchase of EO properties and the work that we've done with environmentally endangered lands uh and also with our infrastructure, we were able to lower flood insurance for unincorporated Miami Dade. And we get a lot of questions about HOAs. We have done some work, we have a registry now, and we actually have a loan program where we're helping people to pay for uh work that's being done in our HOAs. Our district also has a particular HOA program that allows people to put a grant so they can do a lot of this work.
Thank you so much. Um, and now as we transition into the audience Q and A, and it's still open. So anyone out there listening, if you have a burning question, our two candidates are here for you. Uh, it's a very good opportunity for you to submit your questions. We have one question here from Kimberly Davis about how do you plan to address communities who are facing gentrification when there's development projects that are billed as affordable, but they actually have an AMI of eighty percent? That's not really low income. Um, how do you sort of answer a question like that? We'll start with, um, I I forget who we finished off with, but we can uh go to Mayor Mayor Lerner for that one.
So, um, the challenge is to uh come in and try to preserve uh and restore housing before it is so dilapidated, it just has to be demolished. And the county does very little of that. In um, in the West Grove especially, there could have and should be um engaging uh opportunities. The Dade Heritage Trust has done that, where they would buy uh and invest in smaller apartment buildings, restore them, and allow residents to remain in their own community. That's got to be a priority.
Thanks so much. Same question to you, Commissioner Regalado, about uh how to address communities facing gentrification when they have projects sometimes that come in and the the AMI is still, you know, at eighty percent and it's still not affordable for many people.
Yeah, but just as a clarification, the Dade Heritage Trust does that work with funding from the county. I actually was part of the million-dollar allocation to do that work in Miami Dade County. And we work with Rebuild Together, which is the organization that helps folks specifically in the West Grove and in South Miami to keep their homes. Now, as to the actual question, uh, what I was mentioning before about changing the HUD rules, HUD forces us every time that we have a an offering, not only to establish the AMI, but also to have a countywide lottery. It doesn't allow us to keep the people that are in that area in that area. I have requested a special exemption and I'm working with NACO, like I said, and other stakeholders. We're going to be opening uh that for comment in the next few months, asking HUD to allow us to do a special lottery for displaced communities where they get to remain in their homes. Right now, the only people that can remain are those that are living in the buildings that we tear down. Uh, but what I've been asking for is by zip code, uh, looking at the displacement in order to bring that social equity and to stop gentrification. But we need HUD permission to do that. We have gotten HUD permission. I was able to get HUD permission to do Casa Familia, which is the first housing for neurodivergent uh adults in Miami Dade County. So it takes a lot of work, but we're able to do it. And we're also asking developers to go to the AMI. See uh the work that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm sorry, we ran out of time there. Um, but we're going right back to you for this next question. Um, what are your plans for the West Grove community? And do you feel that the residents there um know you and have, when's the last time you you've been in the Grove?
Um, I actually live across the street from the Grove in Golden Pines, so I go to the Grove a lot. Uh, we have a lot of community meetings and we've met with all the stakeholders as we work on the redevelopment of several properties. We actually have an RFP uh for the West Grove that I put out uh over a year ago. Uh, that RFP, we had over seven meetings with the community and all our different stakeholders. And we even allowed private homeowners to participate uh in the offering if they also wanted to develop their properties. This project has two phases. It has thirty-five percent AMI, sixty percent AMI, fifty-five percent AMI, eighty-five percent AMI, workforce at a hundred and twenty, workforce at a hundred and forty. It eliminates the gates and it actually has a community space and a library that's going to be at the very center of it. So we're very excited about that project and the housing that it's going to bring uh to that area. We've also been working with them and the city of Miami, because it's City Miami zoning, in order to see what we can do to help people stay in their homes. The reality is that a lot of residents want to be in that area, but mainly it's residential. We have another parcel that we're looking at potentially redeveloping uh and doing for Grove residents, and we might do.
Sorry, uh, we ran out of time. Uh, former Mayor Lerner, the question to you, uh, when's the last time you were in the West Grove and what are your plans for the community there?
I am regularly in the West Grove. I attend Minister, the Coconut Grove Ministerial Alliance meetings uh monthly, eight o'clock on uh Saturday morning once a month. Um, about six months ago, um, the commissioner never attends. About six months ago, when her staff was giving a report, one of the um members of the Ministerial Alliance interrupted him and said, you know, we really want to see the commissioner, will you please ask her to come? Maybe he never conveyed that information to her, but she has yet to show up. I go to the homeowner and tenant association meetings and the uh community advisory board meetings. Um, the former City of Miami Commissioner Ken Russell worked long and hard with the West Grove to help create a uh community redevelopment association and was um waiting and hoping for the uh county commissioner to pursue it, it passed to the city, it needed to go through the county, and she dropped it. Find another instrument for the count for West Grove.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Regalado. You were mentioned by name. You have a rebuttal if you wish to take it.
I did not to do the CRA uh because it wasn't going to work for the West Grove and it actually went way past the West Grove. Uh, the project that we're doing now, the RFP for the county properties, is what is correct for the West Grove. The CRA would not have worked. It would, it was going all the way to Lejeune and was really going to be destructive. A lot of promises were made and those promises were not going to be kept by that CRA.
Thank you so much. We have many great questions in the chat, um, but we're running low on time. So I'll get to one here about the urban development boundary line. Um, and they mentioned you, Commissioner Regalado, I'll let you answer this. It says, "In light of Commissioner Regalado's decision for the expansion of the urban development boundary line in the Homestead area, how are you ensuring the jobs at this South Dade techno uh technology district, sorry, are are creating for the local uh community in South Dade? And how are you ensuring that it doesn't perpetuate gentrification there?"
Well, in that, in that particular vote, which was a super majority of the county commission to move the line for that specific uh uh site, uh, what I requested was over two hundred acres uh in environmentally endangered land uh in and around the site so that we could preserve that uh specifically for the watershed and for water projects. In terms of the economic piece, it was a very tightly written um document with covenants. Uh, and it has by zip code who is going to be hired uh and the jobs and how much they're going to pay those folks to work at that site. So the economic piece uh was fleshed out uh with uh Keone McGee in particular, with the Mayor Homestead and a lot of other people that participated in that. Um, I voted originally against the project. Uh, my involvement really was more on the environmental side, specifically for the EO properties and to ensure that they were cleaning up the site because it was a site that had a lot of contamination and a lot of issues that were creating water quality problems.
Thank you so much, uh, former Mayor Lerner on the urban development boundary line, expanding that for the South Dade Technology District. How do you, how do you feel about that vote and about the jobs uh and where they're going to go?
Um, the urban development boundary was created in the eighties. The specific rationale was to protect our fragile wetlands and our hog welfare. Um, this vote, it took them four deferrals before they could convince, and it was this commissioner who was the deciding vote to expand the boundary. Thank goodness, there were other reasons that that project um would have to start all over again. It was not. It was not approved at the state because it is such a bad idea and a bad location. I would have never, ever considered expanding the urban development boundary, especially for a project like that. Warehouses, when there is plenty of space in South Dade for more warehouses being, uh, developed or created or expanded. So it was a, uh, very, very dangerous opening, um, for other developers to try to do the same thing.
Thank you both so much. Um, and now as we approach the end of our forum. We want to give each candidate the opportunity to have closing remarks. So Commissioner Regalado, starting with you, you'll have ninety seconds to share final thoughts with our audience and tell them how to learn more about you or get in touch. Take it away.
Sure. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Well, thank you all for, um, listening. I've done a lot of work over the last four years, uh, at the Board of County Commissioners. I actually am the most prolific county commissioner. Uh, if you go on the website, you will see that I have drafted more legislation than any other county commissioner in the last fifteen years. A lot of it has been water and sewer, infrastructure, uh, projects that I've worked on with Derm. Uh, if you live in District Seven, we have a composting program that I brought, uh, and fund, uh, through my office, uh, with Pinecrest. And we're actually going to be expanding it to South Miami and to areas of Kendall. And we're very excited at how well that has done. I've worked on recycling. The county commission tried to eliminate recycling last year and I saved it. And yesterday I actually passed a fifteen-year plan for recycling where we've negotiated the best rates that we ever have. And I've been able to bring the contamination down ten percent. I've been working on different projects like yard worth recycling and we're working on sludge. We're working with the EPA on forever chemicals and we're bringing several projects that have to do with more water quality. And specifically housing and how it ties to water quality now that we have impermeable and we're working on storm water and on the pumps. It's so important, uh, in District Seven for us to have infrastructure. I am honored to be the person that worked on the underline. Underline Phase Two and Three will be done, uh, by, well, the Phase Three will be done by November of twenty twenty-five. We're so excited about the bioswales and how they worked during the last rain event. So if you want to learn more about me, it's RaquelRegalado.com or you can follow me on Instagram, Raquel A. Regalado. Uh, also on Twitter, Raquel Regalado, and Facebook, Raquel Regalado. Uh, I enter my own DMs. Uh, you can find me in our Coconut Grove office, uh, anytime or downtown. I work, uh, through the break. Uh, I am proud to chair Tri-Rail and to work on homelessness and always, always the proud parent of two neurodivergent adults.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Former Mayor Lerner, um, you have your closing remarks now. We'll give you a little time at the end to plug all the pages and where people can find you. So take it away.
Okay, alright. Um, thank you for this opportunity, um, and for your, um, a variety of questions covering a lot of really important issues in District Seven. Um, I served as eight-year, eight years as mayor of Pinecrest. And job number one for me then and would be now is to engage my community in problem solving and in, uh, visioning for the future. I did a strategic plan. I created advisory groups. I created a youth advisory group, education, uh, green task force, transportation, so that together the community could work on the future that they want in the quality of life. Um, I have been endorsed by Equality Florida, Ruth List of Florida, the Kendall Federation Action PAC, the Sierra Club, and the Southern Poverty Law Center Action Fund. Um, in addition to that, I am conducting an extreme grassroots campaign because it's so important to me to, um, create relationships with the voters and to hear their concerns. Um, if you look at Kendall, all of unincorporated Dade, they have no voice. They have no access to local government. I have promised elected, I would create a district office in West Kendall and work towards a West Dade, a government center. Because there's certainly enough population and need to access government services there. Go to cindylerner.com and all of my other social media networks are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you to our audience for tuning in and submitting questions. I'm sorry we couldn't get to all of them. But you know how to reach your candidates and you can send them there. This concludes our virtual candidate forum for the District Seven election. Remember you have until July twenty-second to register to vote. The election is August twentieth. Uh, the deadline to request the mail-in ballot, August eighth, and early voting begins August fifth. Thank you all again for joining us this evening. And remember, stay informed, stay engaged, and learn more about our upcoming candidate forums at votemiami.org.